Eight thousand twenty-three. Need a motion for accept the bills on September sixth, two thousand twenty-three meeting.
So, so I'm sorry, I could not find my phone.
Oh, okay. Feedback from up there. Again, motion to accept the minutes of the September sixth, two thousand twenty-three meeting.
Oh, second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? Follow the roll, please.
Mister Atkinson.
Hi.
Miss Crandall, uh, Mister Curran.
Hi.
Miss Hawken, hi. Mister Mustico.
Which one?
Yeah.
Mister Nacastro.
Yeah.
And Mister Skewy.
Hi. Site plan review coffee shop would drive you indoor and outdoor seating. The final site plan reviews.
Uh. Do I need to stand up or do I sit right here?
You can sit right there, whatever you're comfortable with. Um, help cite the penalty. And no, it was local determinate. Tell me to get back to us on that. County planning board. Um.
Probably.
And you want to see. And you updated the site plan for some little bit better, didn't you?
Correct.
And um, do you want to see it better? Um. Did you go to the county meeting?
Yes, we did.
All right, did they have any, no issues about?
No, none at all, except that uh.
No issues, like the outdoor parking or I mean, outdoor seating or anything?
Nope.
And they did note it, note on their, on the um, referral we got back from them, so. Um. Board members, any further questions from the last month?
We were supposed to get a count of the uh, number of seats inside. If we need an additional restaurant.
That's, oh, that's building department stuff.
Yeah, that's not us.
It's not us, we'd be doing the site plan. And we just mentioned that as a courtesy, so they understood that.
Okay.
With that, so um.
And then. Running spaces.
Ten by twenty?
Yep.
Thirty sixteen parking spaces.
Are they ten by twenty measured?
Yep.
Any comments? One hundred forty. Except this is a final. Cycle. All right, um, with that, board members, we can move on to seeker. Our team. All right, I'll read this and chime in with um. Your thoughts. Proposed action create material conflict with the adopted land use plan or zoning regulations. That would be a knowledge compliant with our local regulations. Proposed action result in change of in the use or the intensity of land. Could be change of use, but we've been intensity of the land, it wasn't back, now it's gonna be. Drive through in the coffee shop. So, well, knowing. Even know where it's small impact. Proposed action impair the character or quality of existing community. In um. Action have an impact, an environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a credible environmental area, that is a no. Proposed action result in adverse change in existing level of traffic or affect existing, yeah, existing infrastructure. Mass transit biking or walkway. Um, level of traffic, no, um. Nothing on um, mass transit biking or walkways, that would be a no. Proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate any reasonable. Available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities. Any work they do when there has to conform to the energy code. Saying existing buildings, I'm sure they're not changing anything, would require that, so that would give no impact. Uh, proposed action impact existing. Public or private water supplies. That being no. Also public or private wastewater treatment. Utilities, no. Action impair the character or quality of historic archaeological or architectural or aesthetic resources. That would be a no. Oh, is actually an adverse change to natural resources such as wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality. Or a fauna. Existing site, um. There would be no impact. Action will result in increased prevention erosion flooding or drainage problems. I know everything's there existing. I've never had any calls about flooding or problems down there on the lot. Action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health. Now, if you're gonna be shooting the food there. Um. So on page two. I'm gonna check the box that says, proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts. So we'll need a. Motion to accept. Seeker. It is an un, unwisted action. Providing significant adverse environmental impacts. So, hold.
Second.
Motion in second, any further discussion? Follow the roll, please.
Mister Atkinson.
Hi.
Miss Crandall.
Hi.
Mister Curran.
Hi.
Miss Hawken.
Hi.
Mister Mustico.
Hi.
Mister Nick, Nystico. Nacastro.
Right, Mr. Mustico.
Mister Skewy.
Hi, motion carried. Um, so now we'll need a, it's really, file for secret. So we need a motion to accept this as the final site plan.
I'll make a motion to accept this as the final site plan, second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? Follow the roll, please.
Mister Atkinson.
Hi.
Miss Crandall.
Hi.
Mister Curran.
Hi.
Miss Hawken, I, Mister Mustico.
Hi.
Mister Nacastro.
Hi.
Mister Skewy.
Hi, motion carried. So go see Greg, um, Greg will be good again, calling the building permits and uh, good luck to you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank her. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Excellent, awesome, thank.
Okay, moving on to business, uh, number seven thirty-four A, Gooden's Auto Sales. Eighteen ninety-nine Grand Central Avenue. Special permission, my planning board request with no sales, and we there.
Hello.
Gentlemen.
How are you?
Good. Are you are. Mister Gooden?
This must be good now, okay.
Okay. So, what do you think, John?
Well. One of the, one of the questions was with the deed. Has to have a special permit. We're making an assumption, because we really haven't gone back and looking, but we knew. Golden transmissions were there, you know.
Years ago.
Hundred years ago.
Golden.
Transmission was there and formerly uh, our total service.
Yes, and we're pretty sure that the, the special permit for, that allows for motor vehicle sales and uh, and uh, service establishments. Is issued, so we're gonna deal with this just as a site plan review.
Okay, so it saves public hearing and all that stuff.
Yeah.
So, um, what we'll do is we'll, let this over, it's gotta be referred to the county because it's on a county road. And then next month we can take action on it, so. Um, that's what we're, we're, we're doing, so there's no extra board in here or anything for uh, public hearing, so it's just us. County planning and then back to us next month, so. Um. More numbers. And it's questions, concerns. About site plan.
You guys have any idea how long all those buildings have been there, but when I first saw this, I thought it was all new construction. And obviously, it's not, no, it's not, um.
No, the owner before. They were art. Put up big barn and back and all that kind of stuff.
All right, yeah.
And it re, and rest of this, this building here has been there forever.
The front building has been there since ninety-six. Great, the back building was uh, put in in two thousand exact.
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess, um.
Tough site.
Yeah. It's a tough site, I mean, you get a lot of buildings, but not a lot of room to do too much else. Um, one thing I, you, you show your, your site plan showing three cars in the front.
Yes.
Um, and that's where you access the building for your, your cars also, right?
Correct.
Um. I guess, my question, are you and you both?
We'll move them in, in, in between, uh, the, it's the left side of the building as you face the building. Will be the, the, the operating for in and out, so the right side is going to be for the engine overhaul, but. So what, so I want for a vehicle that.
On site?
Six total.
Six, yes. It's kind of a, you don't anticipate anymore, this, is that what you just gotta figure it out and it works for you?
That's what works for us, and that's what we figured would uh, be easily accessible, so it's not interfering with any of the fire zones or any. Um. Other issues as far as moving vehicles in and out and around. That employee parking on the south side.
Employee park.
That one is a bad act. That doesn't impede any kind of fire entrance?
Not at all, sir.
How do they get there with a power plant in front of there?
Sorry. It wouldn't be bone in there anyway, it'd be set up to the road.
This isn't the work here.
You need twelve foot access. It's not anything in the fire court, I'm up this, they, they gotta provide access out back.
Other.
Can't make things up.
At the big tracks.
You. You would get, you would get a guard down for the, right, right?
Yes, there was one parked there tonight, um. Where's that? Down in that employee parking area along that side, when I went by, I went by there today.
Yes, sir, we uh, we parked to there so that you would see what. We've had them there since we applied to that.
Oh, all right.
It would be seen if you guys came by or go by, you would see what, what, um, what we had proposed.
Okay. It's awful, Tony.
I hope so, then.
Little bit over there, in my mind.
For years, it was just a repair shop, so. And then the other gentleman came and didn't run up to repair shop, but that building outside. And he was just using it for storage. And then they asked only before this ran a repair shop out here.
So we're. Really all, we're looking at truthfully as a product segment.
We're not, no, we're, we're just loo- looking at a site plan. And there's really not much, no, there's not a much, much change, there is no change from what's already there.
I would just like to see. You know. Cars how they would. Fit into the front. He just having no three cars. Parking space and they're down to ten by twenty. So that would be. It would take you almost thirty feet for your vehicles in front. And you've got thirty-six feet wide building. At thirty-eight feet, I can't read that.
Yeah.
Thirty-eight feet. So. It's gonna be. Got a tight there in front, you're gonna come out.
Yeah, that's totally different.
Probably. Parking spots ten by twenty, but. Your car is probably eighteen feet. So the front setback to that, front of that building is twenty-five feet, I believe, from the front property line. So you got five feet to play with there.
Right, with the six foot setback off of the road is required. Unfortunately, that's not necessarily the road. It's the property line. Sorry.
They. That's a hundred foot wide setback.
Yeah.
Well, road right away in there. So that's why.
I know we had two cars sitting in there tonight, probably down by there, that was then.
So he's not gonna be out in the road anywhere, he's probably got another. Twenty feet from the front property line to where the road starts, I bet.
Yeah.
I'm just guessing.
It didn't look, it didn't, like they nosed in there, they looked like they could turn. And. Make a maneuver to come out, not backing out into the road.
Yes, sir. Anybody else, comments? Do we need a better site plan before it goes to the county? John, what do you think, we need, do you need that showing that stacking of the cars here in front? I was just gonna say, the garage door in the front, if I remember that building, that's off, it's, as I'm looking at the front of the building, it's offset to your right, am I correct?
There's two garage doors, since.
Okay.
Those guys say. That you believe there is, I know Greg has actually put some time and looked and. He didn't find anything in his purchase. And approved, I believe we could ask him. But he didn't find anything either in them.
For what?
For auto sales and especially permits, anything like that. I mean, in the past, there's been stuff in there, yes. I know, but there is no documentation. As far as well, Greg knows.
I know arts can't, had to come in to us. And then.
I know Gold, I know Goldens came in also. Cause I remember I represented Goldens and I couldn't sit in on that.
And you built that from building, didn't you?
Right. If I may, that was what's your name? What's your name? Huh, Carol?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was.
Yeah.
So, if facility was a. Stay on this motto, right? Why do?
Yeah, I assume to think so.
So why do we have to do any site plan?
Because they're actually changing the use.
From what it is. Yeah, what, what, I wonder why, what, what, what building permit has to be issued, Greg, that we're here for a site plan?
Um, it kinda, it, it, it really is based on DMV. Um, because the town of Horsteds has never officially given them approval to. Giving that, given that property approval to sell vehicles. Um. So when the DMV reaches out to the town to ask if. Approval has been given to sell vehicles.
Was there anything in the billing permit files, cause that.
I looked, I looked in.
Probably had to do a letter years.
Yep, and it was only for automotive service and repair. Um, so that.
But it went through the special permit procedure at one point.
It, it did, but.
Yeah.
But nowhere was.
But our special permit procedure at that time was approval for all three, motor vehicles, repair and service establishments. So once it was issued, it was issued.
Okay, I mean, I, so that, I guess that's uh, where we should have started was, um. Do they need to come and, and is it okay if I say sales are allowed, that's what my question was.
Okay, cause you've got to do something for.
Done for DMV.
For DMV.
Right, and.
Meets, meets zoning.
Right, and throughout the process of looking at the old files, nothing ever mentioned, although there was a special permit issued, but none of the applicants ever. Applied for anything that had to do with sales.
For the, probably. Right, at the time, they were only talking about. But I think it was.
Right. But, yeah, and I don't disagree with you, John, I, I think, you know, that, that is how the special permit was written, but now with, with uh. Vehicle sales being approved by site plan and not special permit. Um.
By special permit, still a special permit's required.
Okay, the way he worded it is special approval.
Special permission, you don't, you, he doesn't mind my language, but it's still a special permit.
Okay, okay, so I guess that's, that's the main reason for them coming is to make sure we're all on the same page.
I'm using double rate, so I don't know nothing.
I'm. Figure out the best way to help you here, that's what.
Yeah. Yes.
Yes.
Did the town approve it?
Right.
As that, and he could only find as a repair service, but he said the same thing, that it was all in one, and you go to as repair service. It all falls into one, but.
Because you're doing both there.
Because you're doing both, right.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, he's got room there, so.
There's your, there's your cars. Quick picture, happens to have three cars sitting out for. And that's the new building, right, that we, we approved before.
Do we even?
No. But.
Do we even do anything with this?
Well, I think, but we, we, we can, we can probably do is uh, just to help Greg is, is uh.
Amend the site plan and include this.
Amen, yeah. You know, and, and ratif- ratify that uh, a special per. Permit had been issued, you know.
Since it's a minor change, can we just handle it today without?
Yeah, yes.
So no.
Because there's no, we're not building anything in.
And, and driveway, you're not, you're just placing.
Right.
Six cars there.
Yeah. I would think we could do it that way. I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's been used that way for. What, thirty years? The last people, were the last people in there, more cars on the sparkle clean laundry lot than they had. On their own, is, is that?
Right.
Am, am I wrong or not?
I just remember, I went to, I was in the Plymouth troubleshooting contest in high school with Billy Golden, who originally had it.
Right.
So. Do we need a new seeker on this?
No.
All right, so all.
We're not changing anything.
So we're just gonna amend an existing site plan. Showing automotive sales. On existing property.
Con- confirming that automotive sales is an approved use, yes.
Okay.
I don't see.
So that would be our motion, right?
Yes.
So. Run, run that one, five, maybe one more time again.
That we are, we are confirming. That uh, automo- automotive sales is in in, included use. In the, in, in any prior uh. Special permit issued at this point in time.
Okay.
And then we can do it, we can do it that way, I mean, you know, it seems a little, it's a little silly to burden them with power errors. If there were, over the years, when we've been going by it for years and see it used.
All right, so we need a motion in a second to approve, to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All the roll, boys.
Mister Atkinson.
Hi.
Miss Crandall.
Hi.
Mister Curran.
Hi.
Miss Hawken, I, Mister Mustico.
Hi.
Mister Nacastro.
Hi.
Mister Skewy.
Hi, motion carried, Greg can write about it tomorrow for you, if you and me.
Thank you. Good luck to you.
I'll get that out for you guys.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good night. Good night. Tonight, everyone.
Good night.
I think so. You're Renova's, you're acting for them, you are, you are.
And so, that's it?
Sure, come on. So we've got Renova Solar on behalf of Shimong Supply Corporation, sixty-one farther road dust. Reapplication conference. For four hundred ninety-six kilowatt. Young Montessori Array. The only news for Shimong's. This is not, this is just a, um.
This is, yeah, reapplication.
Yes, reapplication conference, I wanted to thank you for your time tonight, what I submitted um, earlier, uh, you know, headed the meeting, is a very bare bones. Information about the project thus far. Um, so, wanted to get the project in front of you, get your feedback, and then we can fill out the, the plans and, you know, what else you would need to. Do hopefully approve the project going forward.
Sure, are you just a contractor installing, and that's it?
Yeah.
You're not gonna have any ownership?
We are not.
So.
Well, one question I had was, that I spotted immediately was, um. It says owned and used by Shimong Supply, but then I see that you're connecting to the, to the line out front?
Yes.
So. I guess I.
They can sell back what they.
Okay, okay, so what you're not using, you're selling back, okay.
Exactly, so there would be a new service installed that's dedicated to the solar array itself, and everything that it makes, all of the power it generates. Is sold back to my side, distributed on the grid, and then they buy it and credit Shimong Supplies bills. Um, at the rate, so thereby offsetting their, their costs.
So basically, it doesn't go right to Shimong Supply, it goes under the grid and they buy out.
Exactly, yep, they'll pay them for it.
Yep.
And Shimong Supply is gonna be the owner, correct?
Correct.
And is the owner property now, or just, just. More a structure still, is that practically more a structure still?
I believe Shimong Supply owns it, although it's listed under another owner's name, um. Something in the belt, I have it.
Oh. Totally. Oh, it is, though.
Yeah, Tom, it, it is owned by uh, Shimong Supply.
Right.
How, how? On the ground, how big?
About three acres inside the fence area.
So are we still looking at this as a major solar collector system or solar farm?
I, it, it, a minor system is four thousand square feet.
So this would be, yeah.
So this is a major.
Major, okay.
Yeah, it's a major collection system, yeah. Now, is this gonna come, I didn't look at the thing, come right down to the road?
Sure, so that is one thing I wanted to get out in front of tonight, so what I, the site plan that we're proposing. Um, and we, we proposed it for a number of reasons this way, but it's currently not in compliance with your setback laws. Um, it's supposed to be seventy-five feet setback from the road, um, and from the property lines, I think, side and rear. Um. Uh, and so this is not for a couple of reasons. Um, one, the solar resource is best on the northern end of the property, because the southern end of the property, um, butts up against the wooded hill. That's rising up, so will shade part of the array, but it is still perfectly acceptable for, um, for this project. So we wanted to utilize that. Um, also, the, the size of this parcel uh, won't offset all of Shimong Supplies usage, so they wanted to maximize. You know, what was there and the amount of space that they could use for electrical production. Um, the other reason, uh, twofold is that there's a, a mound in the middle of the uh, so property, so you'll see in the site plan, there's kind of a hole. Uh, in the middle. The property, so you'll see in the site plan, there's kind of a hole, uh, in the middle that we're just going around. Um, it's, it's kind of a loosely filled mound right now, and so in order to not disturb it. And to save costs on grading, um, and, you know, environmental disruption, we're just going around it. Uh, secondly, on the western end of the parcel, it's, it's wooded, um, and kind of brushed. And so if we're able to leave that as is, we'd rather not disturb it if we don't have to. So the environment, environmental impact actually would be much less if we're able to get a variance and install it, um, as most here. Um, I noticed that, uh, buildings and houses across the street from the property are setback thirty feet from the road. Um, so this would be different. Also, the, the reflective, you know, producing side of the panels will be facing away from the road. They're facing south with the major road to the north, so, um, you'll only see in the backside of the panels from the road.
Is it just a regular fence or is it gonna be kind of like a? Uh, privacy fence in the front?
I mean, that's up for, for debate. Um, we would propose a woven, um, six-foot fence, like a deer fence. Uh, and then whatever would need, um, to be, you know, screened or landscaped, you know, to this body.
There's really no houses around there, right?
No, really, to the, um, let's see, at the very corner. At the west, there's like, uh, in one of the.
You ran across from here in Missouri, that's alright.
Yes.
I see it. You see the horse said it's town line, oh.
Yeah, we're right at it.
That's not right.
No?
No, that's not right.
Because I was gonna say, um, so.
Yeah, I don't know what that is.
The village does have land over there.
Floyd's, the apartments are in the, um.
The apartments are in the village.
Village, and that parcel's in the village, and, and then. And the gas companies in the village, the rest is in the town.
Part of the reason I believe that they do that seventy-five feet is for some kind of screening or whatever from the road. You know, I mean, that's something I believe we should look at. Um, you're building right, right up thirty feet from the road, I mean, that's pretty much under the power lines. That run down that side of the road.
You would definitely not be under the top.
And a screening, if you did that.
If, yes.
You'd have to put underneath the.
It would be close, yeah.
And for the information too, or is it, or board, is that area where the trees are? There's a lot of water, that's, that's used pretty much for a. Uh, drainage, uh. Like a drainage. There, there's a ditch that runs all the way down through the, along the hillside that runs from the west side of that. There's a pipe underneath the driveway that's there, and it drains into that. And doesn't go much farther than that. Um, when we talked about putting the sports complex in there, that was one of the things that they were working with, trying to. Figure out, because at one time, there was another permit, they, or site plan. That they had talked about putting in here, which soon is gone.
Yes, I, I heard that. Uh, so that would be another reason why we'd wanna avoid that area.
Another reason that they, they don't have to go into that wooden area, they don't have to worry about stormwater, because it won't be disturbing. I think, so that's there, because right now, it's just grassy metal when you're going and.
Yeah.
Uh, well, I was in there, but I know you're not gonna be disturbing, not gonna break that.
No, exactly, it requires no gradient or clearing or anything, so it wouldn't require a, a swift at this point.
How about height, how about the height of your?
Sure, maximum height of the array would be eleven feet, could be shorter than that, maybe closer to ten. We haven't, I think for a placeholder, we've chosen a panel, um, but until we're, we get our final approval back from Nisek, which we expect next month. Um, that's when we would, uh, determine a panel and put together. Some more, you know, IFC construction plans. I think your law allows for up to fifteen feet high, and we'd be well worth that. This would be also a, a fixed rack, there wouldn't be any trackers, no moving parts.
That front setback is thirty-five feet, I can't read it.
It's thirty-six.
Okay.
It's thirty-six, it's, it's a little over thirty-six on one end, and it's thirty-four, three on the west end.
So if you do not get a variance through seventy-five feet, what happens?
We'd probably, um, go back to the client and see if they would be okay with shrinking the, the array.
Which is probably was one row, probably.
Probably, I have to go measure it, yeah. That's what it, what it looks like, with the scale.
It would put it tight, it would put the fence tight for that. Second row.
Yeah, we would, we'd move the fence in at that point as well. It would be a, a shame to lose that top row, that is the best producing row of the array.
Are there any converters or, uh, battery storage?
No battery storage, um, there would be inverters, uh, for the DC to AC to make a great.
And they're not shown on the plan, so they are.
So they're not, um, shown on this plan, I think they would be located. Um, I think what's supposed to be is that, uh, that little black box to the west of the driveway up there. That's where the inverter bank is.
Okay.
Although that's not a fixed location either.
It'll only be one way in and out of it.
Yes.
It's not. Not in your zone. Stand alone. So if you lost the first row, would you, would they consider going into that mound, or you don't want to touch, you don't know what's in that mound?
We don't know, and so I, um, would have to go back to my, my construction manager and see, but I imagine we would probably stay out of that mound, um.
Yeah, I can't remember, it's been a vacant lot since I could remember, I just don't know what would be in there.
That's what it looked like too, when I went out there and, um, you know, it's, it didn't look like anything dangerous by any means, but.
It could be an old.
We can avoid it.
An old building, you know, where was the spaghetti palace over there?
Yeah, down, down a little farther.
Yeah, but it's where my daughter-in-law lived, that's, uh. Where the house is.
Okay.
In the south, or west of that.
So what's that, in the middle of the map, it looks like there's a building that has to be demolished.
There's a trailer.
A trailer.
Not like a, a living trailer, it's like an old office.
It's a site trailer for. One of the guys across the street, they've been storing stuff over there.
Yeah.
It's pretty, pretty much construction.
Staging.
Staging area type of thing or whatever, that's what it's been used for in the past. Back, I believe, when Chuck went and did all that. He allowed those guys to come up over there. The only other thing is, is that if we do make a product, you know. To remind everybody that if we do do a variance on that type of thing, that's a precedence, precedence. To future projects.
I think what we give the seventy-five comes out of solar places we're coming up in residential areas, we wanted to make sure that it was. Back far enough. You know, to, you know. And see if in the road, that type of thing, if you are, were in residence districts or.
Yeah, I, I agree, it's not my favorite thing or our practice by any means to come in off the bat asking for a variance. That's typically not how we tend to, you know, design our projects. For this one in particular, it seemed like a reasonable request, because there were not any, you know, residential homes nearby. It was the back of the array that would be facing the road and not the front. Um, and there were other buildings nearby that were within that seventy-five foot distance to the road, so. And because the northern end of the property is the most protected from the solar perspective.
Well, let's put it this way, I know people are gonna be looking right out the door, that, and they do live in a residence on that street.
Is that to the?
West.
To the west, okay.
It is what, three, three homes to the west on the north side of the road?
There's more than that.
There more than that?
There's quite a few on there.
There's industrial or business own.
Right.
Residents that are all in the business, so.
There's a bunch of small houses that are on both sides of that road. I can't, I can't even mess, estimate a white house, there are there, there's, there's quite a few down through. Small ones, they're all small properties.
Oh, sure. But right, yeah, right in front of it.
Down in here? On Fallow Road?
Yeah, below Fallow Road, you've got the old spaghetti palace, and then there's, there, I know there's.
Yeah, there's about four, five houses, yeah.
Beyond, beyond where the.
Yeah, down from that.
Beyond below where Chuck was.
Yeah.
Or whatever, that's.
Five on that side and two, three on the others. Yeah, yeah, they're not, they're not looking at this. Yeah, the, the, for an area variance, uh, area variances are, are fairly easy. Whether the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant, which. Whether there will be an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or nearby properties. The request is substantial, that's probably a yes. Uh, whether the request will have an adverse physical or environmental impact, and whether the alleged difficulty is self-created. Now, if it's an area variance and it's self-created, then it's a death now, but not for an area variance. So.
That is the only way it would work.
Nope, don't have to show that. Just have to show what they wanna do and that it doesn't violate any of those or, or, or not. You know, and, and it can violate, let's, the request is substantial, you know, it's half, so the, the request is substantial, but that's not a death now for. So. The, the very area variance was changed, criteria was changed years ago, remember practical difficulty? Was in there, and they took that out, now area variances, well, we wanna try to help you get it done. And, and, so they made area variances of.
Three variances, right, a front, a side.
And a rear.
And rear.
Yeah, so, you know. Yeah, that's, that's true, yeah, it'll be. It'll substantial gets larger.
Is the maximum use, you're saying that this won't? Hundred percent, it won't be a hundred percent solid provision, is that what you're saying? It will be a hundred percent solid submission for electric with this.
Correct, the, you know, all of Shimong Supplies electricity won't be covered by the solar array, um. Even at its largest size, I'm not sure, I forget the percentage there bills that were offsetting, but, but it's significant, and they wanted to, you know. Maximize the parcels as fast as they could.
Okay.
Alright, um. Don't even need to. Update your site plan, commit with an application for an area variance. And we could make a recommendation, it's gotta go to the zoning and motor appeals.
When you say update the site plan, what, what would need to be added?
Yeah, what else?
Um, maybe when, what this, like, Gary, it is something like that, because somebody else is gonna ask you, um. Think, what else?
How are you gonna access the array?
The proposed driveway and the Morgan ends there.
Yeah, but how you gonna access the array?
I know what you're looking at, you're looking at the south side of the array, once you, because you've got three, three rows of solid. Solid array, and the driveway ends on the north side of the top array, how are you gonna get around to the?
How you gonna get there?
Sure.
The smaller rays on the south.
I, I know the, the chance of having to be there often is slim, but it's not not.
Sure.
What's the, what's the distance between the array and the fence?
Uh, it's typically, it's, it's usually over fourteen feet, um, so that.
And distance between any rays are typical, what, twenty feet?
Yeah, initially the rows, it will be at least sixteen feet, um, I believe this might be twenty.
How are we gonna look for any kind of? Anything in front of us or anything like that, or you guys? Privacy fence?
Privacy area or anything like that, or?
Industrial zone, right? You know something, you're might be right, we gotta check on that, Greg, we gotta check on this mine. Back when they were playing with the, uh, sports complex. Probably we didn't, because we didn't finish it, I, I got it, but.
I don't think so, I, I remember talking with, uh, Kirk, Vessel Meyer, from Meyer Structures Two. And he thinks that that property across the street was included in the PUD, but then. Yeah, I'll have to look, did we take it out for the six oh seven pro sports?
Well, it, it would have been rezoned had the six oh seven pro sports made it to the town board.
It did, um.
So maybe.
You're right, I, I don't, yeah, good question, I'm not sure if it made it to the town.
I think, I think Kirk had that rezoned when I was still working.
Yeah.
He had a PUD and realized it's three, it's three acres, so they could be more creative with what they're gonna do over there.
We better look at that, because then that'll take our way, the variance requests, they won't have to be made if it's PUD. And then it'll come here and then go to the, uh, town board for final approval.
Yeah, we'll, we'll check that out, for sure.
Okay. Yeah, I forgot about that, I think, you know, I think we might have done that, sort of like, uh, over on Colonial Drive, an empty PUD.
Yeah, glad you mentioned that, Tom, that's, that's a good thing.
Yeah.
Forget my ignorance, what does PUD stand for?
Plan, planned unit development.
Okay.
Takes it out of the regular zoning and puts it in the zone, so we, we could be more, or be more restrictive or less.
Okay.
Expect to, it's just a, so, it's like a zone, so.
Got it.
And we make up two rules. It's gonna maintain this once it's built, if they.
Good question, so, um, either they will maintain it or they'll contract with us, they haven't just opened yet, if they want us to do the O and M for it. If, uh, they were to contract us, we would come in and mow it, uh, a couple of times a year, not, it wouldn't be. Perfectly manicured, but we would, would mow it so that the roof doesn't grow up over the panels, the, um, bottom edge of the panels. And the, you know, ground is typically a two and a half to three foot clearance.
So if there was an issue with any of the panels or anything, how, who would be alerted?
Sure, so, um, both us and Shimong Supply will have access to the monitoring of the panels as well as Nisek. So if there are any kind of production or, um, maintenance issues, we've gotten a learn on that, or we'll notice. You know, dramatic decrease in production right away. Um, and so with our maintenance contracts, we provide an annual check. In addition to our, our kind of constant communication and monitoring, the monitoring updates every five minutes, it's in real time.
So you guys are, always, you guys are always gonna be involved with us, even though they own a thing.
We might be, they haven't, they haven't, um, uh, contracted us for the O and M portion of this yet.
Well, this is the owner putting it in, so that, that's, that's a little more difficult, I think, yeah.
What we need from the owner, how he plans to maintain and upkeep.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's, it's like anything else, yeah. The town only mows their stuff twice a year, so.
So the, the decommissioning bond would come from Shimong Supply then?
Well, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm. Well, I, I, I'm, I'm questioning whether, do we, you know.
Because it's.
Because it's theirs, it's, it's their accessory use. I see.
Right, it's not a, a community.
It's not a community, right. It's their accessory.
It's on their land.
Well, you know, over here is on their land, but still, it was, it's producer, you know, that's. Megawatts over there compared to what this is. But this would be like putting it in your yard, except it's on a commercial size, I'm, I'm not sure on that one. Gonna be interesting, I ain't gonna be around, I'll be dead. I hope you are. By a long way.
All right, so. Greg needs to do the research for the P U D, that would, um, help. What you wanna do, what apply for. So if it's a planned unit development.
It's not a permitted use.
Right, yeah. We did, the town board would have, so we'd send it to the town board. They would refer it to us for site plan review. And then they would give it to. They would have a public hearing and then approve it and then we'd come back for the final development. Greg's got your information, right? So there should be, it should be, can you, what, what do you want to file on this? Or it's home worth by, I need a, a vote. Go through the minutes. This is the work. This is the, um, what they did to us, they all filed. There would be, be a couple of things, there'd be one, rezoning it to a P U D, there'd be another one for, for the sports complex.
I remember the sports complex.
It could be, um. A B U D with this, um, rezoning.
Yeah, you'll probably resurrect those, Greg, I would assume.
Yeah, for sure, we'll, we'll find all that tomorrow.
All right.
So. We, we, we'll see you next month or probably month after, depends on what Greg can find.
Yeah.
Sure, so, um. I'm happy to come whenever.
We'll, we'll have to get to you to see whi- which, which process you're going through.
Sure, yeah, whichever path.
Greg can help you more with that too, cause, um, he can walk you through the.
If, if we end up needing a variance or meeting.
Yeah, always, you know, our zoning is online, E code, so you can see everything, our, our zoning is, E codes. And everything's there, including the planning development, and if we go that route, um, so. Greg can help you navigate through that.
Okay, so it sounds like, yeah, probably next month, I'll either be in front of the Z B A or the town.
No, you'd be back without, you'd be, you'd, you'd get more stuff in, you'd be with the town, cause the town will look at it and refer it back to us.
Okay.
Um, and then meet the second ones the other month. We would be looking at it at all next month, if it was a bindin development. There's a town board after we see that applicant. All right, moving right along, we're gonna jump back, Journey Church, two sixty D. One sixteen, we support.
Just in case.
We got you, are you, I guess the email you sent?
Yes.
And. Pretty much you're still trying to, um. Will you tell us?
Sure, so we had a, uh, our church ordinance with the board of, uh, I Matter Foundation, which is the entity that does the L events. And. Basically. We've decided that we're no longer willing to do them from here on out, uh, and that. They're looking to move the events that are currently booked offsite. Uh, they did, they had a. Special site, but that, I just don't know if that felt. So, but they're still looking to, to move stuff offsite, uh, we did some additional sound checking. Uh, and they checked up on like, uh, on the ceiling and the roof area, and the decibel level was ninety-five. So, I don't believe that there's gonna be any way that we could, we can mitigate the. The problem that.
Okay, um, I have a music background and. Going back many years, um. And that whole building there is a soundboard. And the reason for that is originally that building was supposed to have been metal studs in the building, and they made it all wood studs. In the building, and that's reflecting that sound. Even through the, uh, sheetrock, so, um, now you've got one big sounding board vibrating with that. And, um. It's gonna be difficult to get, um, if they had metal studs, metal doesn't, um.
It doesn't do that.
Doesn't, um, amplify like wood does, that's why panels are made out of all wood and they got wooden soundboards, things like that. And if you take something and put it on that wood. And it'll amplify it, and if you do it on metal, it won't amplify it that much, so I gotta believe that since. They didn't follow their original plans. And they put, they didn't put whole building with metal, well, I remember when we went to the framing, it was all framed up with wood. And we had to get engineers to sign off on it, that, um. It's gonna be very difficult for you to come up with that, just talking about last month, um. I was thinking about that, I go, there's, you know, no way that. We're gonna. You're gonna, considering the decibel levels and what it has to absorb and the. The frequency of the, of what you have there, it's, it's, it seems like it might be losing battle.
Yeah.
I'm not a sound engineer, but my music background and my.
Well, when we, when we took the measurements and found it was ninety-five decibels up on the ceiling, we realized that. It, it was just bouncing around and coming out, and then, but probably, it just, there's no way to fix that, so. We're, we're, we're gonna shut it down.
They do make some sound bending things, but they, you'd, you'd have to cover every wall, every inch.
Yeah.
And that probably doesn't make a lot of sense, so. Anything else you want?
Yeah, so the, uh, the barber shop is, he, he's moving, uh, to a new location, so. That's no longer going to be, um. Engine, we're, we're looking for, uh, I don't know what you. I got from the.
I, we had a site plan, we just wanted to know. The, on the floor plan, what was what inside the building?
Okay.
What was rented to somebody here and there, I think that's what originally, um, you guys had to skip. Supplying to Greg, so.
Okay.
Never got caught up, is that correct, Greg? Greg, did you ever get caught up?
Uh, no.
No.
Okay.
We got, um, we did get a, a, a floor plan that showed. Um, you know, where office spaces were, uh, but not specific to, you know. The barber shop is located here, the sound room is located here, um. So not, not a, not a great one, um, but we did get some info, but, um, not a, not complete.
All right, well, I, I can provide that, cause I have the plans now, so.
Okay, good, um, we're looking at the leaseable space in the building.
Yeah.
And, um, for that.
You would also ask for, uh, like lease agreements with the, the gym. And so she's in the process of, of. There, one of the trainers is, is going to be now the owner, um, and she's in the process of getting an LLC established.
Okay.
Using, but it's not there yet, so. Right now, we basically just have a kind of memorandum of understanding, I don't know if that would be sufficient for you or.
All the things we're talking about from, from our viewpoint. You know, to, to talk about the sound stuff, but the event itself, eh, from our viewpoint, are commercial. These are commercial in nature at this point in time, so that's why we're here is. Go through the P U D, so these board can make recommendations of town board as to how that should be expanded, uh, the, uh. You know, the barber shop leaving, that's, that's okay, uh, the fitness facility staying will have to be, that is a commercial use. And will have to be part of the approval process at that point in time. Uh, one of the. One of the, uh. One of the issues I think was brought up before, and I don't know if we passed it, uh. Is that the I Matter Foundation is actually operating. The, uh. Concerts, or whatever you wanna call them at this point, so basically that puts Journey Church in a, in a position of a. A landlord to I Matter who's taking care of that, and. And one of the claims in your attorney's statement was, hey, you know. Because this is all going through not-for-profits, we can do anything we want, well, I disagree and. Uh, so did Congress, and, uh, so. The fact that the proceeds from building the operations will be just exercise. Would not be placing a substantial burden, we've gotta worry about the church. We gotta make sure you can exercise y- your religion in the church. And one of the things we cannot do, the other, the other two tests are, are, are really not an issue. But the, 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 the main test is whether any burden we put on you by zoning, uh. Places a substantial burden on your religious exercise, so we stop you from exercising your religion. Uh, I matter is not your religion, that's, that's over here, so. So we, we've got that, so, and what I'm, I, I think what we probably wanna look for. Ladies and gentlemen, and is, is next time come, we come in is to. Get what you guys would personally recommend to the town board that they consider, uh, in the P U D. Uh. Uh, we've talked about, well, we talked about, one of the things that kinda surprised me here was hosting a daycare. For children with mental and emotional disabilities. Is not a protected religious exercise, you know, even if you did something like that.
Yeah, and we're not gonna do.
No, no, I know that, but it's just, that seemed, that seemed, yeah, you know, a little extreme to me anyway, but, uh. Uh, so, we've got it kinda, and we don't, we don't wanna walk that line. Right, we wanna make sure that you, you guys could do basically what the original building was gonna do. And I think what you intended to do with the other building, till it got out of hand.
If they have some commercial use of it.
Okay, and just to be upfront, uh, we heard rumors, we heard things today that you're still booking new concerts.
And I was told that, that they stopped.
Okay, I just wanted to bring that up, cause that was, that was on, that was on the table, I wanna be able to go back and say, no, that's not happening at this point in time.
Yeah, cause if, that, that'll be, that'll be a real problem, cause. Yeah, that, that would, that would cause, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
How many concerts you got left there?
My understanding is eight. Well, then, well, that's the last number I heard.
Okay.
But it, it's soon to be, it, it's not into the new year.
Okay. All righty. Maybe the Clement Center can use some money. Or the arena. I have.
Great place packing down there, yeah.
I often thought that because of s- some of these. You know, you go, you go to a hotel in, in Baltimore and there's church groups all over the place coming in for weekends for events and everything. I haven't thought the arena might. Be an attraction to hold events for, for, uh, religious groups, church, whatever, from out of town at that point in time. It'd be a good use for it, but. Uh. But whatever. So what I'm gonna ask you guys is, take, take, consider what you, uh, want to, would, would, uh, expect in a P U D.
Can we get a copy of that P U D so we can?
Is that what you're reading there, John? Is that what you're reading?
No, no, that's about area variants.
No, the, the thing is, you got highlighted.
Oh, no, this is, uh, I had a, uh, I had the National Re- Legal Research Group do a, uh. Do a memo, uh, for me in case of, cause they did a memo, uh, with. Regarding to the outreach activities by, uh, who they're no longer using, but, uh, First Liberty. Uh, out of Dallas?
Yeah, somewhere in Texas.
Somewhere in Texas, yeah, and so we had, uh. I had this done for my legal file at that point in time, so. But, uh.
We need, board members need. We brush our memory of what, what was your last approvals they've had there, so.
Yeah. And you guys are gonna need something to, to maintain that, or it's not gonna be maintained.
Yeah, we have challenges.
Yeah. And you've got a big tax bill to pay, and you wanna try to get out from under that.
Right.
Which means between January first and March first, you've gotta completely change. This facility and con- and convince the assessor. And that will save you what, thirty-three thousand?
Well, the first bill is, it's sixteen.
Sixteen, whatever, sixteen. So. That'll, that'll save you that at that point in time, so. Yes, you do, it, 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 challenges are. Sort of, uh, not unique way, but definitely in, in itself, okay.
So, I, I'm kinda just for clarity in my head. The only thing, the only business that's in there potentially now is the gym.
Right, yeah, no, no, there, there is a cafe, we're, we're not gonna run it like a, a business, so.
That'll be run by the church.
Yeah, that'd be run by the church, so, you know, so that would be another, yeah.
But any other businesses that come in there, we're gonna have to come up, or they're gonna have to ask if they can.
And P U D, yeah, that was the point.
And to amend the P U D to everything that goes in there.
It's, yeah, yes. Yes, unless there's some sort of general approval, and, and don't think that they can't. Uh, don't think that they couldn't hold a concert series. You know, they could do something, it's just, our, our point has been eight or ten concerts a month is not. A, a concert series, it's, it's, it's an out, a commercial operation, plus it's not even run by the church at this point in time, which was.
I think if they were Christian-based. I think, I, I don't. Is the cafe open to the public?
Uh, it is only open to the public during those events. Anything that, or if there's, so, there are times when, uh, there's. It's called the one, one way for a cause, I'm not real familiar with it, but. We've had them come in, they've rented their space and they'll do something, and so we, we'll have that open to sell, you know, but. I'm sure we're, we're gonna. So I'd like to keep that aspect of the restaurant, but it's not, it's, it's only gonna be open and maybe sell to, to things like that. Or like if we have a conference come in. Or like if we have a conference come in, it, it would be there to sell. But again, it would be the church running it, so.
Yes.
Yeah, you still lease that out to the cheerleaders?
Yes, so that was, I mean, obviously this isn't the place to discuss that necessarily, but. Uh, I mean, that's, doesn't really necessarily fall within a religious.
Exercise.
Exercise, but. They, they, twenty dollars.
Well, there. At it like.
It's not.
I'm, I'm looking at it that if it was happening in the Saint Mary Our Mother Gym, would we say anything?
Right.
I'll bet you we would.
They're all high school kids, not high school kids, but.
Right, right.
It's, it's, it's with the village.
It's not a, yeah, it's with.
Not a profit, it's just a place for them to.
It's exactly, you know, so that's, that's right, you know.
Community activity.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I wanna go home now.
They'll, they'll see you next month. I won't be here next month. I gotta point on that, that, okay, so. Let's say I'm on.
All right. So hopefully we can get this port wrapped up next month and get it. To the town board. They'll call a public hearing and then uh. And then they can move forward to make the decision and get you. In a, in a road that everybody can be happy with. I think the noise goes away and you've done all.
All right, anything else, board members?
Um, what's this referral that I got in the email from the Village of Porsets?
We're not gonna put that on.
Yeah.
We're not gonna entertain it. Okay, they, they shouldn't be here. It's not even their zoning for uh, split a lot back on. I don't think probably getting those, you know, zones. Regulations and so we're not even entertaining.
It sounds bad.
No, that's what, you know, I got, I'm like, you know, with this, so that's why I brought it along and. And I didn't know, so.
No, we, we. We have thirty days to get back to one of them.
If the town board wants to say something, they can, but I guess, I, I, I don't see where it's. It's a issue for us anyway.
I would, I would help them to see where, but they, I couldn't find it in there at all, so I'm not sure.
Um, one other thing too is, is I went up to the connector road. There's, I know that's without access. But there's two very well-defined permanent driveways out there.
Yeah.
One is to the gravel pit, one is to the fishing pond, which everybody is using.
Yeah.
Okay. I, well, we can talk about that. Just try to figure out if there's a zoning area that we need to establish up through there, or maybe because it's without access.
Most of it's P U D up there because of the uh, gravel, gravel pit.
Okay.
We were, that was done years and years ago. Even before I was working here, so. Maybe John was. That's all P U D in there, so. Well, something could've been there, you know.
Well, yes, suppo- yeah, supposedly. I mean, that, that's private property.
Yeah.
They, yeah. And what was the last time, what was the last call over there? Some kid broke his leg or something, fell in there?
A really guy died.
And he was just, they leased my son or something?
I need to tell. All right, motion to reserve. Almost.
Second. Mr. Atkinson?
Hi.
Ms. Crandall, hi, Ms. Herb.
Hi.
Ms. Hawken, hi, Mr. Mustico.
Hi.
Mr. DeCastro.
Hi.
And Mr. Skibby.
Hi.